Good afternoon, everyone. It is Thursday, October 16th, 2025, approximately 1:00 p.m. This is the regular meeting of the Rancher Mirage City Council and Community Services District, Energy Authority, Housing Authority, Joint Powers Finance Authority, Library and Observatory, and Redevelopment Successor Agency Board. I would ask you to please join me in a pledge of allegiance to our wonderful country. If you will, I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fromberg-Eddelstein?
Here.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Protem Molado?
Here.
Mayor Wyll?
Here. The first order of business today is a presentation by the Rancher Mirage Chamber of Commerce. Board members Nicole Kent of the Ritz Carlton and Ken Chavez from Sunnylands. And welcome to both of you.
Thank you, Mayor Wyll, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, city staff members, and also...
Joining us in person and virtually. We are honored to present to you today from the Chamber of Commerce. We are a representation of the board. My name is Nicole Kent, the Director of Sales and Marketing at the Ritz Carlton Ranch of Mirage. We are excited that the Chamber is seeing fantastic growth for the month of September with 40 new members, which we're really excited to see. We also recently celebrated another sold-out marketing summit that was focused on AI to really empower the local businesses, and it was extremely well-attended. Thank you to the Rancher Mirage Library, who really went above and beyond to make it a seamless event, and also thank you to everyone involved. The library also hosted the Show Your Heart mixer, so thank you so much for all of you that attended. It was more than 200 guests and a wonderful evening, so thank you to all the council members that were in attendance to that. At the Ritz Carlton Ranch of Mirage, we are thrilled that we should be, that we are breaking more records this year. We are projecting to be up almost 10% total revenue year over year, which we're really excited about. And a lot of that growth is from the Edge Steakhouse, which is now open year-round, and State Fair Bar and Kitchen. We're positioned well for 2026, so as we're turning the corner, looks to be a strong year, even though the market has really stabilized, so just want to share that. Also, we'll be sharing soon with you a fantastic new Halo video that also has a visual of the Rancher Mirage Observatory, so really pulling in the whole community. We are grateful for your exemplary leadership and support and demonstrating the importance of a growth-minded local government, so thank you so much for your support.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Chavez. I'm Director of Media and Community Relations at Sunnylands and also a proud board member of the Rancher Mirage Chamber of Commerce Board. I'm pleased to share a few Chamber and community updates with you today. The Chamber has recently moved to new offices, just four doors down from its previous location. The new space allows each staff member to have his or her own office, which contributes to productivity and makes for a more welcoming environment. We're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the move on Friday, October 24th, at 3:00 p.m. We invite each of you to join us. And we're still in the same location just across the parking lot from Ferguson Home and Lambs Close on Highway 111, just a few doors down. Looking ahead, the Chamber is adding a flagship event in spring 2026, the State of Healthcare, an event that features Eisenhower Health and is supported by the City of Rancher Mirage. The community event will spotlight health, wellness, technology, medical innovation, and access, all brought to you for the community and by the community. As for Sunnylands, Sunnylands reopened for its 15th season on September 10th. We have a new exhibition installed titled Curating Canopy Trees at Sunnylands. It features the photography of renowned photographer David Loftus, and it is inspired by the selection of trees that helps transform raw desert into the serene oasis that is Sunnylands today. At the end of the month, we'll be celebrating our annual Coachella Valley Days of los Muertos observations from October 29th through November 2nd. The public is invited to the gardens to see ofrendas, our altars, our nichos, shadow boxes, that honor loved ones who have passed. On November 2nd, we'll have a special screening of the movie Coco on the Great Lawn, an animated movie that tells the story of Dieter los Muertos. And lastly, our very popular wellness programs, yoga in the garden, Tai Chi in the gardens, bird walks, all resume that first week in November. All ages and experience levels are welcome. And just a reminder that admission to the Sunnylands Center and Gardens is always free. Thank you so much for your time and for your attention. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ken. Thank you, Nicole. The Chamber's just doing an outstanding job. I think there's somebody sitting in the audience might have something to do with that. Katie, why don't you wave to everybody back there? Katie has been the power behind the Chamber for many years. You've had exceptional growth, and you are, you know, one of the engines that truly keeps small businesses running. So we thank you so much for your contribution every single day, and welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. The next item of business will be the presentation by Fine Food Bank. Debbie Espinoza, if you would. Debbie, and welcome.
Mayor, City Council members, Rancher Mirage community, thank you all so much for having me here with you today to talk about food insecurity here in our Coachella Valley and specifically here in Rancher Mirage. It's important for me, as the CEO of Fine Food Bank, to make sure that we regularly give updates, at least annually every year, to make sure that all of us are working on making sure our communities are fed together. Fine Food Bank, as the regional food bank, we do our best that we can 365 days a year, but we definitely cannot do it without the support of all of the cities, of the community members, to make sure that we are all being taken care of for those that are wondering where their next meal is coming from. So today, I just want to give you some facts and figures about what's happening here specifically in Rancher Mirage as your annual update, but then also answer any questions that you may have. There's a lot that's going on right now, a lot that's going on right now. With the government shutdown, with benefits not being deployed in this past month and in possibly upcoming months, I know that there's been a lot of questions that people have been asking me, whether it's from the community or other government officials at the state, federal, county, city level. We've been answering a lot of those, and so I'm here to be able to answer those questions for you too as well. But let me start by just talking about what's been going on over this last year in Rancher Mirage specifically. We regularly collect data, and you know, Rancher Mirage has been great. We have one direct mobile distribution sites along with other agencies that we supply food to who distribute out to the community as well. In this past year, we have close to 50,000 pounds of food specifically here in Rancher Mirage that we've distributed to the community. And of those pounds of food, about 10,000 of pound, 10,000 pounds goes out directly in our commodity supplemental food program, which are senior boxes designed specifically for senior feeding. Food that's appropriate for seniors because of various health concerns that they have. There are like no grapefruit juices in them. There are low sodium products that are in them. There's dairy, there's protein that's in them, and they get them on a monthly basis regularly from Find. We have a caseload here specifically in Rancher Mirage amongst the 4,000 community seniors that we have throughout the Coachella Valley. In addition to that, we provide case management services. We have a couple of homebound clients that we deliver directly to that are not able to get out to our distribution sites here in Rancher Mirage. And then on top of that, we also have ending hunger for a lifetime services that are specifically working on the root causes of hunger. And in fact, there were two high school students from Rancher Mirage High School that participated in our Youth Advisory Council. For their service as part of our Youth Advisory Council, we did give them scholarships to be able to attain higher education in the amounts of $2,000 apiece. So when it comes to ending hunger, we look at it not just with regards to the direct distribution of food, but we look at it from outreach services as well as the root causal work too as well. The City Council and the members here and staff have been supportive of our work for many, many years, and we absolutely appreciate that. I know that Michael and Lynn and you yourself, Mayor, and the other City Council members have come out to Find Food Bank in order to be able to support our events. And so for you to understand our work, to know how you can support us and support the other agencies that are distributing food is very, very critical, especially in moments like this where we are battling a lot of things right now to make sure that people can continue to know where their next meal is coming from. So I'm going to pause there and give time to all of you to ask me questions, because I know there's a lot of questions that are going on in the community day, and I will do my best to be able to try to answer those, knowing that there's a lot of things I'm not able to predict right now, because we're in a very reactive state.
Well, Debbie, let me say this, that, you know, Rancher Mirage has a, the image of being an upper-income area, and that doesn't mean that we don't have a certain populace that is in need of the Fine Food Bank. There is a need, and there are a certain number of seniors specifically that depend upon your services. And so we thank you so much. You can never take for granted your role in life or where you are, because things can change dramatically. And so you are really that fallback position for so many people, and so much of your good deeds are recognized. So we thank you so much for your continuous service.
We appreciate that. You know, the statistic, and I'm glad that you brought that up, because there is a certain percentage. The food insecurity studies that Feeding America does every year, we look at it from a very granular level. We can isolate down to Census Bureau tracks, we can isolate down to zip codes. For Rancher Mirage specifically, you're right, at around 15% of a food insecurity rate currently today. And so we look at that data and statistic to make sure that we have services that are being offered here in this area to be able to help accommodate that 15%. And when we look at food insecurity, a lot of the times, people think that we're talking about homeless people. We're not talking about homeless people. Many of the people that are food insecure live in homes, but they're having a hard time making ends meet, and so many of the times, they're sacrificing eating in order to be able to stay in their home, in order to be able to get their medical care, in order to be able to purchase their medicines and pay for those co-pays, in order to pay for their electricity and utility bills. So that's what we look at with regards to food insecurity, or people that are trading things to make ends meet so that they're not getting regular meals every day and are sacrificing food to accommodate the other things. You have about 15% of the people in Rancher Mirage that are doing that, based on the studies that we have from Feeding America. So my, from our research, many of those of the 15% are most likely fixed-income seniors here that are in Rancher Mirage that are struggling through that.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, if I may?
Yes, please.
So today is, I think it's day 15 of the federal government shutdown. By the way, the last time we had a government shutdown in the city of Rancher Mirage was never, so I would hope that maybe our representatives in Washington, D.C. might take an example of what, the example that we set in this city. Question for you, the government shutdown, does it affect you, does, how is it affecting you, and are your revenues being affected because of the shutdown?
Yeah, so the, it's, when we look at government shutdown, there are a couple of things that we're looking at. One, most primarily, the SNAP benefits or the CalFresh benefits that many of the people that are food insecure have to be able to support their purchasing efforts at the grocery stores. So it's the government aid that's given in the form of what's called an EBT card, kind of like a debit card, that gets refilled at the beginning of every month. It can be anywhere from $50 to $200 or $300, depending on family size and income level. They can use that to purchase grocery store products, and then a lot of the times, they'll supplement with, you know, food from a food bank in order to be able to help and make ends meet. If you can imagine the cost of food right now in grocery stores, it's fairly high. So even if you have about $200 or $300 in benefit that's coming, but you have a family of five, just kind of think about that for a second. So they'll use a combination of things in order to be able to help and make ends meet. When there is a government shutdown, those benefits do not get issued, because there's technically no funding for them during the time of a government shutdown. The budget has not been approved yet. You can understand that as City Council members, government budgets run fairly the same. The October benefits were issued at the beginning of October. Even though the government shut down at the beginning of October, those were already being funded by the end of September. We have 15 days right now, and as we speak, the federal government is stating to the states, do not load up those EBT cards at this point, which means that come the 1st of November, there are people that, if the government doesn't reopen, people that were depending on these dollars will not get funded, which means that they will draw down on the food bank services and our local food banks and local food pantries even more so than what they have before in the past. Additionally, there are a lot of federal workers that are not on CalFresh that are now starting to depend on the system because they are not getting their paychecks. Think about the TSA workers at Palm Springs. Think about the federal government workers that are here in our local area. So they're not getting paychecks right now, but they're also not signed up for SNAP, so they wouldn't have gotten any SNAP benefits in October, and they haven't received their paycheck for the last two weeks. So we are now serving those people as well. For us, when it comes to funding from the government, you know, Fine does really well with making sure that we are stable financially with reserve funds, because we are a disaster management food bank too as well, so we can hold on for a little bit. But if it continues to go on, we'll start drawing down on those funds too as well. But for right now, our first efforts and what we are focusing on is ensuring that we have access for all people and that we have the ability to try to keep up with the demand and the need for what is not being given on the government side right now that they were depending on. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Debbie, thank you to you and your team for your ongoing support of the working people and those that are in need of our valley. I appreciate all the time that you extended to both Councilmember O'Keefe and myself. I think, before I make my point on one thing, I'd like to highlight the fact, and thank you for sharing, that food supplementation is not just for those that are unemployed. They're trying to, in a good, on a good day, trying to piece a livelihood together or make it, make their social security check stretch a little bit longer. One of the things that I learned from you and Councilmember O'Keefe as well, is that many of these people are individuals that have children and that are working nine-to-five jobs, sometimes two and three jobs, just to make the rent and the utilities during season, let alone trying to pay that electric bill over the summer. So we appreciate all that you do. When Councilmember O'Keefe and I met with you, you had indicated with the new administration that had come in earlier in the year, that you were facing a $1.8 million loss from the federal government. Has that exceeded, has the amount exceeded since then?
The, it was interesting, because when the new administration came in and when we were talking, we had suffered about 10 truckloads of food that was scheduled to arrive in order to be able to help us through the summertime, and those 10 truckloads were then retracted by the federal government, and it amounted to about $1.8 million in food. So there would be no way that we would be able to repurchase those items off of funding at, you know, that short of a time. So we were affected in that sense. There was some government aid, a new program that was started to help kind of replenish that, but it definitely wasn't to the same degree of what was retracted back. Those, those food items that came to us through the summertime, they have all been deployed, right? So when you look at, the way in which a regional food bank works is, is we are projecting out, you know, six to 12 months in advance in order to make sure that we have efficiencies and effectiveness with how we're monitoring and moving the food through. With this government shutdown, which was not planned for, we know and we've already are experiencing about 30% increases in our food lines, and so when November hits, there will be an additional bump or additional increase, but because the government is shut down, there may not be an extra supply of food that's coming, and so we will look at rationing food in order to be able to make it through the long haul. What does that mean for people? It means that we are trying to sustain, and it's not necessarily that we're giving less food, it's that we have to be so monitored with the amount of food that we're given and what we are deploying out to make sure that we can go for the long haul, given the circumstances that they don't have extra income, to be able to also purchase at the grocery store.
And then in addition to that, those that distribute food, there was protein and dairy that was cut as well.
Yes.
So that was, aside from the 1.8, then you had the additional cuts in that direction. And what most people, I don't believe now, is that you have a very strong partnership with our farmers down valley, so these cuts also affect our farmers as well.
Yes. Yes, because many of the people, many of the people that work in the service industries here in the Coachella Valley, whether it's in the food and beverage industries, the agricultural communities, many of them rely on the food bank to be able to help supplement that which they need support with. And so there's a trickle-down effect, right, with regards to not just affecting the food bank supply, but what is the effect on the community by which is struggling already to be able to receive food services, and how does that affect them when it comes to going to work and their energy levels and their ability to be able to manage? They definitely want to make sure that they show up every day, but, I mean, I think all of us have been, you know, in school at one point, and maybe we missed having dinner and breakfast that night, and they had to take a test, you had to take a test. Can you imagine what that was like, taking a test while your stomach is rumbling, and you are, you know, kind of food deprived? Imagine what that's like, trying to go to work every day? We have a strong and amazing community, and our clients that we serve are strong and amazing as well. And so we know that they're going to make it through, but at what cost will it be for them to be able to make it through and keep their jobs? And that's why it's important for everybody to understand this, because it's a, it's a community-wide effect in so many different ways.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Debbie, thank you for being here. You know how I feel about the work that you do. When you met with the Mayor Protem and me a few months ago, that $1.8 million stuck in my mind too, and that was before, as you said, any kind of unexpected government shutdown. Is there, a couple of questions. Are there categories now where you are in severe need that are more important than others? And how can people help? Do you need cash donations, or do you need commodity donations, or what can people do?
Fantastic question, and thank you so much. Again, you've always been supportive of the work. You've been there since the day that you stepped onto the City Council and have been by your side, so we appreciate that. There are three ways that food banks, regional food banks, absolutely need help. The first way is, is we need, we call them the three F's. So the first one is friends. Volunteers are absolutely necessary in being able to repackage the items that come into our food banks and get them ready to go out to line. So we have over 2,000 registered volunteers, many of which come from Rancher Mirage, so you have a very healthy volunteerism out here. We can always use more. We definitely could use food. Food right now will be very, very important. Shelf-stable foods and shelf-stable proteins, canned chicken, canned tunas, those types of items, to be able to deploy out very easily to the community, those will be absolutely helpful. And funds. Funds will be critical right now. A lot of the times, funds and foods can be combined together, because the food bank has the capability of buying foods at lower costs than what you can buy at retail. So a lot of the times, during times like this, when we fundraise money, we will apply that money to actually buying food, because we can buy them in full, I can buy a full truckload of tuna, which will be at 40% less than what you can buy at the retail store, and so it maximizes donors' money when you think of economies of scale. So that's where you can combine the food and the fundraising together. If the government shutdown continues to move forward for a longer period of time, you will most likely see Fine Food Bank going to the community, asking for financial contributions to be able to help support our food supply coming in, to support the community. And we are, we are getting ready for that now, in order to make sure that we can be preemptive as opposed to reactive. Thank you for that question.
I have a quick question. When you do a box, how do you balance fresh versus shelf-stable? That's the first question. The second is, how do you also bridge a cultural divide and sensitivity as to going into communities where, let's say peanut butter doesn't work as a commodity for them? Beans may work better. I know that's a, that's a disconnect for some times with food banks, is making sure you're meeting the cultural needs, dietary needs, and culinary needs of a community that doesn't eat what we would traditionally think of as the shelf-stable foods.
Yeah, it's a great question. Fine Food Bank always tries our best to make sure that we can distribute culturally, what we call culturally appropriate food. So the foods that people would traditionally use within their foods that they would cook. I'm Filipino, right? So, you know, the things that we can do with certain types of foods may seem odd or strange to other cultures, but we're so used to using them that we can make food very quickly. If you think about it, let's just say there's a mom and she's working three jobs. You can cook faster if you're cooking your native foods versus trying to apply something that doesn't necessarily work, right? There are times when we can't do that. There are times when we're looking at just making sure that people have food on their plate, and we train and work with our clients by sending out recipes that can help them understand, how do you replace this item for that item and still be able to cook culturally for your household? There's a balance between the two. A lot of the food that we get in, we don't have any control over, because it's donated product or it's commodity product that's coming in from the federal government. Our clients are creative. It's fascinating to go out to lines, to be able to talk with them, and we hear from them how they've turned peanut butter into something else to still be able to make the recipe, but we will do it if we can. We balance all of that with regards to fresh produce, right? So we are a healthy regional food bank, meaning that we strive for distributing close to 40% to 50% of our total product in the form of fresh produce. We want to make sure that one of the aspects of our food distribution doesn't contribute to type 2 diabetes, and it doesn't contribute to childhood obesity, which are both epidemics that happen in lower-income communities. One of the reasons why is because they don't have access to fresh and healthy produce. A lot of the access they have and what they can afford on their own are nutrient-deprived foods, like a whole bunch of heavy carbs. They're eating pastas and they're eating bread all day long, which means that they're getting food, but it's not healthy food. So for us, we try to balance it in that sense. So about 50% fresh produce, and then a balance of proteins, carbs, and other items that are mixed along with that. Only about 5% to 10% of the food that we distribute would be considered items that are a little bit more on the sweeter side, but everybody likes to have a birthday cake too as well, and we call ice cream mental health.
That's a great analogy. That's a very meaningful statement. And ice cream is a good idea. Debbie, if I may? Debbie, if I may, will you be having food drives? And if so, when would those food drives be occurring? And how can the public help?
Sure. We, we can be, we can have food drives. A lot of the times, you'll see food barrels that could potentially be out at the stores. But what we have found is many of our country clubs and many of our homeowners' associations, because they understand that the cost of fuel and diesel right now is highly expensive for us to send a driver to go out and pick it up, they're doing food drives on their own within their respective communities, and they're getting volunteers to load up their SUVs and drive it over to the food bank instead. Our focus right now is making sure that our resources are being focused on the deployment of food out into the community. So any help that the community can give us in order to be able to bring the food over to the food bank, that would be fantastic. Additionally, you can go onto the website and make monetary contributions in order to be able to help us purchase foods, too, as well. And again, that can also stretch the dollar. We do virtual food drives as well, online, as well as at different stores. So you'll see QR codes where you can just easily scan it and contribute dollars that way.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Debbie, thank you so much. Your presentations are always extremely informative, and we appreciate that. It helps us better understand, you know, all of the things that you do and how we can assist you in furthering that cause. So thanks again for coming in here, spending the time, and educating us in the various things that you do.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you again all for your support. We really appreciate it and need it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to council member comments. I'm going to start it today. This has been a very challenging period, where we lost a critical member of our community family, a pillar that has been with us for many years. And before I make my remarks, may I ask you to share a moment of silence in memory of Dana Hobart, please? Thank you. I'd like to start off and read my comments. I was asked by one member of the media to make my comments the day after Dana passed away, which would have been a week ago last Saturday. It was a challenge for me. And I told that individual that I wouldn't be able to do it that evening, that I was still frankly emotionally spent, but I would try to get it done the next day. And so I'd like to read to you what I did send to the media, which they published, which reflects my feelings entirely. And it's to, for a friend, mentor, and civic leader. And I said, yesterday, we lost not just a statesman, but a true friend. Dana Hobart was a pillar of Rancho Mirage, a man of vision, integrity, tireless dedication. His decades of public service left a lasting impact on our city through thoughtful leadership, bold action, and a genuine love for the community he served. From undergrounding utility lines to strengthening city finances and championing civic initiatives like the observatory and amphitheater and the Rancho Mirage Dog Park, Dana shaped a better future for all of us. But to me, Dana was more than a leader. He was a mentor and a dear friend. Ours was his friendship built over many years through countless conversations, shared values, and a mutual commitment to public service. Dana saw something in me before I fully saw it in myself. He encouraged me persistently, sincerely, to get involved in local public government. He believed in thoughtful, dedicated leadership and believed I had what it took to serve. It was his unwavering support and quiet persuasion that inspired me to run for city council and ultimately serve as his colleague. Working alongside Dana was one of the greatest honors in my life. His passion was contagious, his intellect sharp, his principles never wavered. Even in the most difficult decisions, Dana approached public service with humility and the conviction that government must always serve the people, not politics, not special interests, but the people. His legacy is etched into very fabric of our city, but his impact reaches even further in the leaders he inspired, the friendships he nurtured, and the example he set. Dana, thank you for believing in me, for your guidance, for your friendship, and for your lifelong commitment to the city we both love. Rancho Mirage is better because of you, and I am better for having known you. You'll be missed more than words can say. Rest in peace, my friend. And I mean that sincerely. And I know that a lot of you feel the same way. I can tell you that I shed a lot of tears over my computer in composing that. Dana was an irreplaceable force, but he left us with such significant and indelible memories. So thank you very much for, for listening. And I know that many of you feel exactly the same way. With that, I'll go to my left and ask Council Member Eve Fromberg, it'll stand to reflect on any comments that she has.
Number one, that was an incredible tribute, and I'm sure that Dana appreciates those kind words and the comment on his incredible legacy for the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
On another note, this last week, we were at the League of California Cities. It was my first time attending and more in my adventures as a new councilperson. I had a great week in Long Beach. Long Beach is a beautiful city. I had not really stayed there extensively like that. And I was really impressed with their downtown area, their convention center, their port. It was a beautiful town, beautiful stay, great weather, although we were having good weather here. So it's kind of sad to leave here and go there when it was cool here, too. I had a great experience. But what I was surprised by is, number one, the number of small cities there are in the state of California that assembled their cities our size, a little smaller, a little bigger, but definitely felt like allies in the fight. The other thing that was, though, most impressive to me was in going through the agendas for each day and the seminars and discussions that they were having, is how much of what those cities were learning how to do, this city is already doing. And I was extremely impressed, as I am every day that I do this job, with how advanced this city is. It's the little engine that could. It's impressive. So things that are cutting edge for municipal development and municipal work, our city has either implemented or is in the process of implementing, or is on the whiteboards of these offices, getting, getting planned to be implemented. And again, I just have to commend, I'd love to say it's all city council. I probably should say that, so my comrades in arms here feel honored. But I will tell you, it is city staff. Our department heads, the staff that support them, this is their work. This is their ingenuity. This is their embracing future trends for better and smarter-run cities, and this city in particular, that this city for a long time got a rap as not being an advanced city. And I can tell you, that's clearly not the case. It was a great week. I learned a lot, but I learned more sitting at tables, networking with other cities, and our own city staff and members, and members of my council, about how much we do and we're working on doing. And it starts with our, obviously, our city manager and works its way down. But it's the staff that's sitting in this room and in the offices behind me that really make it happen. So thank you. I was impressed. I learned a lot. I had a great time. And I look forward to participating next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. And I can echo the many league meetings that I attended. I came away with the, the same feelings that we're doing things pretty darn well. And it reinforced so much of what we do. So I'm glad, this being your first meeting, that you came away with similar feelings. Council Member O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beautiful tribute to Dana Hobart.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Our city staff has been on a roll lately. So if you will indulge me for a couple of minutes, I'd like to make some recognitions today. First, to Assistant City Manager Ryan Stendell and his team, thank you for the remarkable job of repaving Highway 111 in one week. The logistics were complicated, the daily progress was amazing to watch, and the results are great. One of the things that Rancho Mirage is famous for is the quality of our roadways, and this is why. To our Marketing Director, Gabe Cottin, and Haley Tice and the marketing team, congratulations on a fantastic national night out. If you're someone who doesn't believe that our city's number one responsibility is public safety, then I invite you to attend the annual event at Community Park. Lieutenant Turnus and Chief Beverlin and their teams of dedicated servants officers were there. CSO Kyle Albaneseus was there. So was the brand-new city ambulance, the sheriff's helicopter, the bomb squad with the robot, and our emergency preparedness commission, and the trauma intervention program, and the citizens on patrol. There was food and entertainment, and hundreds of residents who came to celebrate our city's commitment to public safety. It was a job well done. And kudos to Mina Dukic, our community development director, for being named one of the 40 under 40 by Palm Springs Life. This designation celebrates a new generation of community leaders making significant contributions in their communities. Mina has one of the most important jobs here at City Hall, and she's one of the busiest people I know. And I've never asked her a question that she didn't know the answer to. All of our city's residents can be confident that our planning department and all of her programs are in good hands. So congratulations. And congratulations to Aaron Espinoza, the Executive Director of the world-famous Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, who was just elected as Treasurer for the California Library Association. Aaron's expertise has made the library and observatory one of the premier attractions in this valley, and he will undoubtedly make significant contributions to the state agency. And congratulations to our city videographer, Kai Beach, for earning multiple accolades at this year's California Public Information Video Officers Star Awards. These awards honor excellence in government video programming across 40-plus categories. Kai wrote, directed, filmed, and edited each of the six finalist videos. And we all know that Kai's videos are fun to watch, and they're informative to watch. But he is also doing something more important. He is chronicling events about our city that future historians will view. So we're proud to celebrate his creativity and dedication. And finally, and sadly, I would also like to remember Dana Hobart. When I first came onto the city council two years ago, one of the first things I wanted to do was meet the legendary Dana Hobart. City Manager Mr. Hagerman arranged a lunch for us, and Dana and I hit it off immediately. We continued to meet for lunch at least every month after that. He told me about his early career, how we both lived in Santa Monica at times, how he got involved with the city, his love of animals. We talked about his grandchildren and their sports teams. He told me about how he got involved with the city and the contributions that he made to our beautiful city. It's impossible to overstate what he did. I will miss our lunches and his stories. I will miss his opinions and his advice. And most of all, I will miss our friendship. So my condolences to Vicki and the family. Rest in peace, Dana. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Council Member Downs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is our first council meeting since Dana Hobart passed on October 4th. He was 93. He, he lived long, and he lived a well-lived life. He was a great leader for our city, and he'll always be remembered for the dedication and commitment that he had to our city that he loved. He served as mayor five different times during his two decades of public service. And it was Dana's, Dana's approach that developed our mayoral rotation. He believed that the rotation system would stem political rancor on the council, and he believed that it would help the council worked, work more productively together. He was right. For me, I've got a special reverence for Dana. It was, it was November of 2021 that Dana retired and stepped down from public service. And the next month, in December of 2021, this council appointed me to fill the remainder of Dana's term. And I'll always be mindful that I filled a seat that was once occupied by a Rancho Mirage legend. So after my appointment, Dana became a mentor for me and a guide to the Rancho Mirage history. That would be important knowledge for me in my service to this city, and I'll always be grateful for the time that he spent with me. Last week, Vicki Hobart gave me a couple of books. I'm going to show them to you and share them with you and tell you about them. This first book, it's a big, heavy book, this big red book. This book contains the Rancho Mirage City Charter and the Municipal Code. Now, if you sit down to read this book, you're not going to have a really good time. It's kind of boring. It's not a beach read. But the importance about this book, this Municipal Code book, this was Dana's book. So he used this book when he went through our city council meetings and figured out how he would vote on various issues. The book, you can't see it from the chamber there, but some of you can see it up here. It's annotated with, with post-it notes. So it's dog-eared throughout the book. And then inside the book, there are, Kofi can see this, Lynn can see this. Look at all the notations that he made. So there's lots of yellow highlights that he made in various sections of the code. Then there are orange highlights. I wonder what the difference was. And there are some places where there are underlines. There are some places where there are circles. There are some places where all of these things exist. So I wonder what that meant to Dana. But in any event, yeah, I guess that's what that meant.
For sure.
So this is Dana's code book, and it's not very interesting reading. But I can tell you that this code book will occupy an important spot in my bookshelf. One other book that, that Dana left for me, that Vicki gave to me last week, it's this little book. And when I tell you the, the title of the book, you're all going to say, oh, that's a quintessential Dana Hobart gift. And just like the Municipal Code book, it's got, it's got post-it notes throughout the book. It's underlined here and there. This is Robert's Rules of Order.
Did he ever.
So gifts are usually given for sentimental reasons. It's a birthday or it's a holiday. But sometimes gifts are given to send a message. And I couldn't help but wonder if the message that Dana might have been sending to me is that when I sit on this dais in these council meetings, that maybe I should be a little bit more attentive to parliamentary procedure. I don't know if that was the message, but it's always possible. Thank you, Dana Hobart. Thank you for your mentorship. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your friendship. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Nice comments. Mayor Pro Tem Malato.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I'd like to comment on, you know, city council just, it doesn't meet twice a month, on the first and third Thursdays. We have other duties. We have several commissions or committees with outside agencies as delegates, direct delegates representing our city, and five other agencies, four or five other agencies as alternates to fill in for our colleagues if they couldn't, if they can't make it to those meetings. One of the agencies that I sit on is Sunline Transit. make it to those meetings. One of the agencies that I sit on is Sunline Transit. Sunline Transit has been working diligently and feverishly for the last two, three years to not only expand its service, but their fuel choice, or their fuel usage, is hydrogen. And that hydrogen fuel source is not in sync with the administration's preferences. So, the board has been working with lobbyists and working with our elected officials, specifically Congressman Ken Calvert. And Congressman Calvert has been a tremendous resource here for the city of Ranch Mirage. You may or may not agree with his politics, but the one thing I will say about Congressman Calvert and his legislative aide, Mayor Glenn Miller, when it comes to this valley, they are ardent supporters, and they will fight for our cities and our residents in the valley. And Congressman Calvert helped to get some financing to help Sunline reach its goals. It wasn't enough, though. We still had additional funding applications in the pipeline for appropriations to, back in Washington, to approve. We, our board members were scheduled to meet with lobbyists and to meet with those officials back in Washington, and the government shutdown has had its effects. Often, we watch the news and say, well, that's happening back in Washington. It doesn't affect us. You've heard now two agencies that have been directly affected. You heard about Fine Food Bank and Like Resources, and then now Sunline. I want to thank my fellow board members that I sit with as Chair on Sunline for their work, specifically the staff. The staff is phenomenal over at Sunline, and I will tell you that they are continuing, continually working to expand those resources, expand its ridership. I know here in Ranch Mirage, we don't have the roots yet that we prefer, but the CEO has given that order to figure out how we can keep moving residents across valley and through Ranch Mirage. Forgive me for my emotion. As you've heard the wonderful comments about Dana Hobart, I've had a really difficult time over the last two weeks. In fact, I haven't even been able to see his wife Vicki because I'm a bundle of emotions. I used to work for the city of Cathedral City, and often, as the case, cities cross over. And we have the pleasure, as city employees, to work with our fellow colleagues in neighboring cities. And that was certainly my experience as a 23-year employee with the city of Cathedral City. And often was the case, I worked with city of Ranch Mirage and had the opportunity to encounter then-councilmember Dana Hobart. And when I first moved to the desert, I was a Ranch Mirage resident. And when I went to work for city of Cathedral City, I moved into Cathedral City. And at the end of my tenure at Ranch, at Cathedral City, I returned to Ranch Mirage on Palmdale Road. He must have heard that I had moved back into the city, because there was a knock on my door, and he says, what is a Cathedral City person doing? Well, you have some nerve moving back to Ranch Mirage and not being an employee with the city. He was always so much fun and such a personal gentleman. And I moved back to the city in 2003. He came to tease me because I had boxes standing up for pickup, for Burt Tech. And I, he was walking his dogs down the street as he did every day, twice a day, which gave us an opportunity to converse. But I'd only been in the house for less than 24 hours. I got the mail, and there was an envelope from the city of Ranch Mirage, and I thought, oh, my gosh. And it said, I thought, my boxes are stacked up, but they're not completely broken down yet. I'm getting a violation from code enforcement. That was not the case. To my pleasurable surprise, it was an announcement, a letter that was going out to all of the residents in our city that they were putting the utilities underground, something that is just a tremendous expense. So, one, I dodged a bullet, and two, I had then-councilmember Dana Hobart welcoming me to the neighborhood and teasing me because I thought I was in trouble. Dana and I would see each other. We had our timing down. He knew when I was getting home from work, from Cathedral City, and he'd stop by and say hello. We'd have discussions about politics across the valley. I learned so much from this fine gentleman. He was an ardent supporter of democracy and the Constitution the last 10 years. He struggled. He struggled. He was very concerned and worried about our citizenry and what changes could be taking place. Above all, the politics, whether it was Seavey Link or maybe something that Ranch Mirage didn't agree with. And we all saw the articles in the Desert Sun. Maybe there were disagreements with his fellow colleagues on the dais. But the one thing I could tell you is, he fought for his residents. He fought for the issues that were so, so paramount for the city of Ranch Mirage. He always teased me and said, one day, I'm going to get you back over at Ranch Mirage. And indeed, he did. I was a Commissioner with the Speaker Series, which was so important to him, that particular commission. And it was my pleasure to serve as a Commissioner for over 10 years on that commission. And then, when I decided to run for council, this gentleman ran down the street and said, I hear you're pulling papers. And I said, yes. And he says, if you need me, I'm here. There were, I did seek his counsel. Were there times that we always agreed? No. But he always respected my perspective, and he always treated me with grace and dignity. And in full transparencies I shared with a member of the media, he helped to change my perspective on certain issues and certain things. And when you're in public service, you learn the number-one goal is to listen to your constituents, whether you, it doesn't matter what capacity you serve in, whether it's as an employee with city government or sitting on this dais. The public is number one. And often, the public has heard me say that the councils of the past have operated with measured and thoughtful decisions, and that's why we have the quality of life that we do in Ranch Mirage. And Dana was very, very much a part of that. He was a mentor. He was a dear supporter of this city, and he was a friend to all of us. And it really came, he always came from a place of contribution. You may not agree with him, but he always came from a place of contribution. I will miss this gentleman because he had such a pivotal role in various aspects of my life, and my apologies for my emotions. It's very raw. And to his wife Vicki, who was an ardent supporter of his and the city, and continues to be, and his family, we thank you for sharing Dana Hobart, councilmember, mayor, and civic leader with, for the decades of service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Those are wonderful words. Certainly emotion-filled. You know, you express your feelings, and I think it reflects, to a large degree, how we all feel. So, thank you for sharing your emotions with all of us. That being said, the next item will be the city manager comments, and if he has any, he will address them. If not, he will then lead us into the consent calendar, if you will, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ryan Stendell, the Assistant City Manager, myself, and the city council, with the exception of the mayor, attended the annual conference by Cal Cities in Long Beach last week. It's been talked about by several council members, but the topics covered various issues, and it was great to network with some of our other California cities that are similar to our size, and hear from them, and see how they're doing, and dealing with some of the challenges that we're all facing right now. There was one session that I thought was really interesting. It was the importance of communities focusing on bringing childcare into their communities. So, this city obviously supported the Eisenhower Health Childcare Center, largest employer in the valley, largest provider of health care, and that just reinforced some of the things that this council has done. But the conference overall was very informative. I do just want to take a moment to thank Dana for everything that he did for the city and me personally. I had the pleasure of working for Dana in a couple capacities, but we spent a lot of time together. Dana was the smartest man that I have ever encountered. He had vision. He could see a topic and understand it. As council members, you get a lot thrown at you, not just from the city, but from all the other boards and commissions that you guys sit on, and it is a ton of information. Dana had this unique ability to kind of pick through all that stuff and pick up on the things that maybe some people would miss, which made him very good at his job. Two funny stories that I want to share about Dana. The undergrounding of utilities, he loved telling that story. And it's actually kind of funny now, being city manager, because it makes me chuckle. But, you know, you saw his, Councilmember Downs showed his book, and he went through every agenda like that, and he was meticulous when it came to his review and preparation, like any good attorney, right? He knew where he wanted to be, and he would lead people down a line of questioning, and then he would drop the hammer on them sometimes. So, he felt like the city staff at the time was kind of dragging their feet on the utility undergrounding, and he was right. And he kind of just kept on getting shined on, and we all know Dana, he don't take that very well. So, he went and wrote the staff report himself. So, you know, kind of just Dana's attitude is, okay, fine, you don't want to do your job. I'll do it for you, and I'm going to put this on the agenda. And obviously, we all understand what a benefit that is today, and just one of those things that makes our community very unique. And he did it at a time when the city had available funding for it that we don't have today. So, if it didn't happen back then, then we would look like most other communities when you see all those wires up. And it's, when you leave Ranch Mirage, it's actually kind of shocking sometimes. The other funny part about Dana was, you know, we, working so closely together, we were very comfortable with each other, and sometimes we entered healthy debates about certain topics. And so, we were in the middle of this healthy debate, and, you know, I was explaining to Dana, you know, why we shouldn't do a certain thing and what the consequence of that would be. And Dana just looks at me, and he says, well, Isaiah, my job is not to make your job easier. Do it. So, Dana, thanks for all the good times and just the many things that you taught me. I will treasure them for my life. So, thank you for all you did for our city. With that, I will move to the consent calendar.
Well, they taught you well.
So, the council has five items on your consent calendar for consideration, item 5A through 5E. Item 5A is the approval of the September 18th, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes. Item 5B is final track map number 38990, Cotino Town Center. Item 5C is to approve the closure of the library and observatory for the 2026 Ranch Mirage Riders Festival. Item 5D are the contracts, and 5E are the demands. Before we go to any council comments or questions, I'll ask the city clerk to take public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. I received speaker cards for two items on consent from Brad Anderson. Is he still here? Doesn't look like it. And those were the only ones. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on something on the consent calendar today? No speakers.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now go to public hearings, and the first item will be the annexation of number 199 to the community facility, Community Facilities District Number 1, and that'll be presented by Jacob De La Cruz, excuse me, financial analyst. Jacob, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. This item is to hold a public hearing for annexation 199 into Community Facilities District Number 1. This is the second and final step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The first step was considered and approved at the September 4th council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Bob Hope Drive and Gerald Ford Drive. It is comprised of two parcels totaling approximately 5.4 acres, and the project is slated to construct a one-story skilled nursing facility of approximately 42,500 square feet. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed, and in the absence of a majority protest, city council may consider adoption of the attached resolution calling a special election, declaring the results of the election, determining the validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recording of the amendment, of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jacob. Are there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on public hearing item number 6A? No speakers. And I can go ahead and read the election results, if you'd like.
Please.
The ballot for the six eligible votes was received on October 16th, 2025, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding item 6A? Seeing done, I'll ask for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution number 2025, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number 1, annexation number 199, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item will be 6B. Again, Jacob De La Cruz will handle this, and that's the annexation number 200 to Community Facilities District Number 1. Jacob, if you would, please.
Thank you again, Mayor. This item is to hold a public hearing for annexation number 200 into Community Facilities District Number 1. This is the second and final step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The first step was considered and approved at the September 4th council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located in Section 31, approximately 650 feet south from the intersection of Monterey Avenue and Gerald Ford Drive. On the east side, excuse me, on the west side of Monterey Avenue, it is comprised of six parcels totaling 72.88 acres, and the project is slated to subdivide the existing parcels into 23 parcels for various uses. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed, and in the absence of majority protest, the city council may consider adoption of the attached resolution calling a special election, declaring the results of the election, determining the validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jacob. Any public comments?
Again, I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on public hearing item 6B? No speakers, and I can go ahead and state the election results.
Please.
The ballot for the 73 eligible votes was received on October 6th, 2025, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding item 6B?
I do, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
So, the end property information here in the memo, it states that this property is located in Section 31, approximately 650 feet south from the intersection of Monterey Avenue and Gerald Ford Drive, and on the west side of Monterey Avenue. I think it's pretty important to make sure I think it's pretty important to make sure that everybody in this city knows that we are voting on an issue that relates to Cotino, one of the premier, the premier development in the city as of today. And I'm going to be proud to vote yes on this item today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, may I hear a motion, please?
I'll make the motion that council adopt the resolution number 2025, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number One, annexation number 200, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Jacob, this is your day. The next item will be by Jacob DeLa Cruz again. This involves the annexation, item 7A, annexation number 202 to Community Facilities District Number One. Jacob, if you would, please.
Thank you once again, Mayor, and this is my last one. This item is the first step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The second and final step is planned to be considered at the November 20th council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located south of Via Vale, west of Monterey Avenue, and east of the Ranch Mirage Dog Park. It is comprised of one parcel totaling approximately 10 acres. Preliminary development plan case number PDP 24-0002 was originally approved by the council on July 18th, 2024, with a condition of approval number 47 of the project requiring that the territory be annexed into Community Facilities District Number One. In accordance with the condition of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the city council initiate proceedings to annex the territory into CFD One and provide for expedited approval of the annexation and levy of the special tax. Upon approval of the resolution, the city will be able to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for the shortening of the time for the special election to expedite the annexation, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map and direct the city clerk to record the map, and establish the date and time of the public hearing on the annexation of the territory. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jacob. Any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding item 7A? No speakers.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding item 7A?
I have a comment again, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
And?
So again, I think it's critically important that the public is aware as to where this parcel is located and what we're doing here with this particular action item. This is one of the parcels that will be part of the affordable housing initiative that this council undertook several years ago. And the projects that we have approved so far, almost three years into our eight-year housing element, represent something like 75 or 80% of the total number of income restricted affordable housing units that this council must find a way to try to approve over the remaining five-ish years of our housing element. So that's what this is about. This is about affordable housing for this city, and I think it's important for everyone to know that that's what we are voting on today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. I think we have acknowledged that we fortunately appear to be ahead of the curve as far as the number that has been mandated by the state for approval. As Councilmember Downs points out, this is one of those critical areas that's extremely important that we get underway and completed. Are there any other council comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say that I was over there yesterday, and we are well on the way of building these affordable housing. The grounds are being graded, there's a lot of activity, so this is all good news.
No question about that. We are. Any other comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 2025, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number One and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services, preliminarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed, and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for annexation number 202.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Sorry, Jacob, this isn't yours. The next item will be the special event permit case number SE 25-0027, fireworks display at the Thunderbird Country Club. Leslie Perez, Assistant Planner, if you would, Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I have for your consideration special event... City Attorney, where are you?
I apologize. Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein will be recusing herself due to potential conflict of interest due to location of her residence at Thunderbird Estates. So she will be, she will leave the dais in the room, and we will get her at the conclusion of the vote. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder.
I'm glad we found you. Can't embarrass the city attorney very often.
All right, I'll go ahead and proceed. I have for your consideration special event permit case number SE 25-0027, a request for a five-minute fireworks display at the Thunderbird Country Club located at 707 37 Country Club Drive. Per the city requirements, an application for a fireworks display may be permitted if approved by the Fire Marshal, city manager, and city council. The fireworks display application requires four items, which includes a site plan showing the location of the fireworks display, a certificate of insurance for $1 million, naming the city as an additional insured, a mailing notice to all property owners within a one-mile radius from the proposed event, and a written acknowledgement that salute or any other similar class of concussion-style fireworks will not be used. The fireworks display at the Thunderbird Country Club is scheduled for 9:15 p.m. on Saturday, November 8th, to celebrate the club's 75th anniversary during their annual opening party. The fireworks firing site will be located approximately 570 feet southeast of the clubhouse within the golf course area. The firing site is surrounded by a 175-foot radius, which is the maximum fireworks fallout zone. Fire Station 50 is located across the street, and the Fire Marshal will be present during the event. Mailing notices were sent out to all property owners within a one-mile radius on October 1st, 2025. Staff has received three emails, one in support and two in opposition. Staff recommends to the city council to approve a five-minute fireworks display at the Thunderbird Country Club on Saturday, November 8th, 2025 at 9:15 p.m. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Leslie. Any public comments here?
I do have one speaker card from Brad Anderson. I'm not sure if he's returned. It doesn't look like it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on 7B? Okay, please step to the podium and state your name.
This is Mark Bestman. I am a resident of Ranch Mirage for several years and an active member of the business community. I have several comments that are objections, and in my business practice, when I work with people, I say, "Don't come to me with problems, come to me with solutions." So at the end of my problems, I will list a solution. So the problems are the noise, the risk of fire, and I understand the Fire Marshal will be there, so that appears to be taken care of, disturbance for wildlife, including our potential mascots who are in the hills, dogs and pets who are definitely traumatized by such noises, people who have dementia who are residents who may be disturbed, people who have PTSD, including veterans, can also be disturbed by such practices, and generally the elderly, and we have plenty of those. As for solutions, I have personally seen, and maybe you have as well, the use of drones for light display to create amazing fireworks displays without the fire. And those are cost-effective, and I would urge that these be undertaken here as an option. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? That was the only speaker.
Okay. Are there any council comments regarding this item?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, yes, the risk of fires is resolved with our fire department. As for dogs and pets, as we would for maybe fireworks shows during 4th of July, maybe there, we could do a press release and have our media resources make an announcement that Thunderbird Country Club will be celebrating its 75th anniversary with a fireworks show. So that way, if there are individuals that do need to leave their residence, if they live in the close proximity, or they feel they need to remove their pets, they have ample time to do that. I don't have a solution for the wildlife, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I do respect all the concerns that you raised. However, we do allow this for the tribe in the 4th of July. Would it be a little hypocritical, I think, if we didn't allow people to celebrate? 75 years is a big accomplishment. So with all the considerations that the mayor pro tem mentioned, I hope that we could have five minutes and not disturb too many people. So I will vote to support this.
Any other comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So it certainly is the case that any of us on this dais would have some concern about authorizing a fireworks display, and we are. I would suggest that I appreciated the mapping as to where this display will be located in pretty much the center of Thunderbird Country Club and pretty much as far away from other residential areas as possible. So in general, the folks that will primarily be disturbed, if any are disturbed by this fireworks display, will be those who have asked for it to be done, the folks in Thunderbird Country Club. This is one of the most historic communities in our city, and while, as I say, I think we should all be concerned and careful about approving fireworks displays like this, this is one that I think is appropriate for a five-minute display to celebrate their 75th anniversary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I will, you know, I reflect upon the time that Dana Hobart sat on this dais, and he generally was very much against fireworks because he was, as we all know, a consummate dog lover, and he was concerned about the animals being disturbed. And yet, he was farsighted enough to allow certain events to take place if they were monitored properly. In this case, I think it is being monitored by the fire department carefully, and the time of the fireworks is limited, so it's not a very long event. However, again, I understand the concerns expressed, and those are taken into consideration in any deliberation that we have. That being said, are there any other council comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve a five-minute fireworks display at Thunderbird Country Club on Saturday, November 8th, 2025 at 9:15 p.m.
There is a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein recused.
Okay. We'll wait for Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein to return, and she is making her way back to her coveted seat, having contributed greatly to the embarrassment of the city attorney.
Always my pleasure.
The next item is item 7C, fiscal year 2024-2025, financial summary and year-end budget adjustments. Joseph Carpenter, our Assistant Director of Administrative Services. Joseph, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, members of the city council. Today's presentation will focus on a review of the general fund operating and non-operating or capital budget versus actual results for the fiscal year 2024-2025. The action the council takes this afternoon to amend the budget as requested in the staff report will serve as the mechanism to comply with the city's budgeting policy for financial reporting purposes. The general fund summary provides a high-level summary of the operating and non-operating revenues and expenditures of the general fund. The table currently shown on your screen displays the fiscal year 24-25 budget, unaudited year-end actuals, and the calculated difference between the two. If you focus your attention on the operating section shaded in green on your screen, you will find for the fiscal year, the general fund had operating revenues of $38.5 million and expenditures of $33 million for an operating surplus of approximately $5.5 million. The operating surplus for the fiscal year was $3.7 million higher than budgeted, as revenues came in just about 10% higher and expenditures came in about 1% lower than expected. With this in mind, on the next few slides, I'll provide a summary of the differences in budgeted and actual operating revenues and expenditures that contributed to this Actual operating revenues were $3.4 million higher than budgeted. As shown on the table, actual revenue exceeded budgeted revenue by approximately $861,000 for interest, $713,000 for transient occupancy tax, or TOT, or bed tax, $544,000 for property tax, $485,000 for the transfer from CFD Number One, $395,000 for reimbursements from other funds, and the remaining 30-plus revenue sources experienced a combined increase just over $453,000. Adding to the $3.4 million increase in operating revenue is a reduction of about $305,000 in operating expenditures. General fund operating expenditures are broken down into three object groups: personnel, which includes salaries and benefits, operations and maintenance, and department equipment. At an object level, personnel was $120,000 under budget, which can be attributed to the timing of filling vacant positions. Operations and maintenance was $165,000 under budget, and department equipment items were under budget by about $19,000. All three object groups for the general fund were under budget, but the current budgeting policy still requires budget adjustments for financial reporting purposes. Expenditures that exceeded their budget for the fiscal year and require amendments to the budget can be found in attachment two of the staff report. The non-operating or capital budget provides information about infrequent or one-time revenues in addition to capital projects and one-time programs that fund, that invest funds into the community. The general fund had non-operating revenues of about $831,000, which includes $371,000 for partial reimbursement of Tropical Storm Hillary cleanup expenses, and capital expenditures of roughly $7 million for total capital spending of approximately $6.2 million. The timing of these infrequent or one-time revenues and expenditures can lead to variances between what was budgeted and what is received. Grant revenues often depend on project milestones, and funding requests are subject to reviews by the various federal and state agencies involved in the funding program, and the timing of major capital projects can cause the budget to be spread out across multiple fiscal years, causing fluctuations in actual spending when compared to the budget. Significant one-time programs and capital projects that occurred during the fiscal year include a $2 million grant to the Eisenhower Health Foundation for a workforce development program of a new childcare center, approximately $2.6 million in expenses for land and land improvements related to parking expansion at the Ranch Mirage Community Park, electrical upgrades at City Hall for EV charging infrastructure, and Class II bike lane extensions. upgrades at City Hall for EV charging infrastructure, and Class II bike lane extensions. As discussed earlier, for fiscal year 24-25, the city had a $5.5 million operating surplus and non-operating spending of $6.2 million for total net use of reserves of approximately $660,000. The next slide in this presentation will show how this reserve spending impacted the city's general fund reserves. In the first column along the bottom of the screen, you'll see the city started the fiscal year with approximately $61.7 million in general fund reserves, and after accounting for spending of $660,000, the city will end the fiscal year with approximately $61.1 million in reserves. It should be noted, unassigned fund balance is money that has not been committed for specific use and is available for any purpose, while funds in the city's six remaining accounts have a specific commitment and can only be used for that purpose unless modified by the City Council. To recap, the city achieved an operating surplus of $5.5 million, reflecting higher-than-expected revenues and efficient expenditure management. The city invested approximately $6.2 million into the community through its non-operating budget, utilizing just $660,000 in reserves. For the fiscal year ended June 30, 2025, Rancho Mirage remained in a solid financial position, revealed no structural operational issues, and ended the fiscal year with approximately $61.1 million in general fund reserves. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration this afternoon. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Joseph. Excellent report. Are there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Item 7C? No speakers.
Thank you. Council comments regarding the updated budget?
I do have a couple of comments, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So first, I think it's important to note that as far as our operating budget is concerned, there was a significant surplus of five point, or the un-unnuded actual is a surplus of about $5.5 million. Pretty impressive. Now, the reason that we have a budget deficit of 659,000 is, as is pointed out by Joseph, there are two primary reasons, and both of them are issues that this council unanimously approved during the course of the year. One was the $2 million grant to Eisenhower for Workforce Development Child, Workforce Development Child Care Center, which I think is important to make sure that we help Eisenhower retain as many qualified employees as possible and makes it easier for them to recruit employees. So I think that was money that is well spent. And secondly, there was, how much was it that we spent on the properties that we acquired? About 2.1.7 million, I guess it was.
2.6 million this year.
2.6 million, I'm sorry. That was on the properties that we acquired and the work that's being done.
Correct.
Around the amphitheater. I think that's critically important. Here's, I think, an issue that we're all well aware of. So many of us on this dais regularly attend events in the evening at our amphitheater, and we're all, I think, well aware that we can do a better job of making sure that our public is safe as they go to and from events at the amphitheater, especially after dark. And this expenditure will help to open up lighting, to open up parking, and to make the attendance at the amphitheater for our public so much better. So there are some very, very good reasons why we ended up with a deficit of almost $700,000. But it's also important to note that we began this year with reserves of just over $61 million. And even with a deficit of 700,000, close to 700,000, we will still end this fiscal year with a reserve amount of a little over $61 million. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, Stephen, I think it is a very, very solid report. As you point out, the acquisitions around the amphitheater are critically important. That area is not safe walking at night. The additional parking will be critical to the area and contribute greatly to the safety of our residents and visitors. So it's a job well done. Any other council comments? I will entertain a motion, please.
I'm happy to make the motion. Adopt the resolutions identified as Resolutions 1 through 4, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 budgets for each respective entity. Number 1, Resolution 2025, next in order, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 city budget. Item 2, Resolution Number 2025, CSD, next in order, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 community service district budget. Item Number 3, Resolution Number 2025, HA, next in order, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 housing authority budget. And finally, Item 4, Resolution Number 2025, LB, next in order, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 library and observatory budget.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now go to non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If you approach three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments. Are there any requests for non-agenda public comments?
Yes, the first speaker is Susan Ragsdale.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm terribly sorry about the loss of your dear friend Dana Hobart. He was a very lovely man. I had the opportunity to get to know him slightly. I have a long history with the City Council, which is very strange to me, and Dana was part of it. I first started coming to the City Council meetings because I got hired by Hager to be the part-time property manager for Santa Rosa Villas, and I was going to move there. And then Marcus Alimon, because they were focusing on the budget, they felt they needed a property manager who knew the laws, you know, somebody with experience in that field. And although I had many fantastic qualifications, I hadn't done property management for a city. Anyway, later I came here because I was concerned about unshielded LED lighting, and it was really something I felt very, very worried about, concern for the city. Dana was sitting here, and after my come, and he said, surprising everyone, "I think we should take a 15-minute meeting with her so she could present this." And I'm sure Mr. Hagerman remembers what happened to me when I came for my meeting. It's a bunch of baloney. Anyway, I really want to apologize for writing so many emails. I've already, over the past three days, have been putting together my binder for the Women's Club, the Rancho Mirage Women's Club, and I realized, oh my gosh, I've repeated myself like 100 times. You know, I have extreme traumatic stress, and I'm not myself, and I've been begging for you to please help me and save my life ever since. It was, I got a fraudulent termination of tenants with 14 false allegations when I was the victim sandwiched between two very, very hostile misogynist tenants or teams. And I have it all right here. It shouldn't have been necessary for me to make a 12 by 18, $2, seven posters for all of you to see this picture of what I was dealing with. And then I had these people, you know, I complained about the property manager in a 105-page report called Incompetence and Cruelty. Mrs. Cabrera allowed the D'Agostinos to move in without checking their background, wherein Palm Springs, they had a list of complaints. This time goes by so quickly. I really need an hour, and I'm really sorry. I have made, it's a seven-page document for the Women's Club. I made copies for everyone. Really what I should do is to show the City Council this book, this binder. This is all the pictures of all the hostile environment harassment. I'm sorry to take a little longer than I'm supposed to.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Yes, Wally Melendez.
The lady from the food bank dictated my subject for today, and thanks to the Brown Act that gives us the, gives the people the opportunity to speak to the government. Nobody mentions that the lady from the food bank is being strangled by Donald Trump, by Speaker of the House Mike Johnson, that deliberately shut down the government. One, so that they can postpone the evidence of the Epstein files. Also, they deliberately flaunt the power that they have of the federal government, which affects everybody. Everybody here, the lady from the food bank, children going hungry. Let me tell you about children going hungry. They go hungry from one day. Children, they go hungry from one day. That is extremely detrimental for them. They grow up in one day, and they will be deformed if they don't have their proper food for one day. And Trump, he's also taking the food from, that the United States is giving overseas, and they're starving to death right now. So I know that we are doing all those annexations and so forth and running the city and so on, but everybody, including you all, need to focus more on national politics. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The last speaker card I have is from Brad Anderson. Does not appear he's returned. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
We have someone in front.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please step to the podium and state your name.
My name is Ernie Demba, and I've been a property owner, my wife and I, Marcia, been a property owner in Rancho Mirage for probably 30, 35 years, and this is my first time here seeing how the sausage is made. And I'd like to thank you for your participation and your activities here in Rancho Mirage. And this is my first time being here at a council meeting, and it went very well. Thank you very much for your activities, and I'm just here to thank you. And I thought it went very well, and there was no arguments, there was no disagreements, there was no controversy, and I never met the gentleman, but obviously he was appreciated, was a founding member of the society, and without him, we wouldn't have done very well. And I'm sorry I missed him. And that's it. And I've got a minute and 55 seconds to go sit down. So thank you very much.
Take your time in walking.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for coming.
Not including the city attorney in those comments.
The kind words.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Maybe a couple of us could get into an argument to satisfy our speaker.
I wish you'd be quiet. How's that? Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we will now be going into a recess before we enter a closed session, and the city attorney will go over those items to be covered in the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I do, I just wanted to share one story about Dana. Dana was one of the first council members I had the pleasure to sort of get to know better. I started my career here as a city attorney with the city, and he'd come in the office and share his war stories, which young attorneys love, and he had really good war stories. You could always tell he was the smartest guy in just about any room he was in, but he also had a soft side. The former city manager had a habit of initiating new members by asking them to tell an embarrassing story of themselves. I somehow missed that at one of the weekly meetings, but the city manager, not Isaiah, the former one, Randy Binder, took the opportunity at a holiday party in front of the entire staff to ask me to stand up and give, share my embarrassing story. I might have overshared, and Councilmember Dana Hobart came up to me, and he was the first one to sort of commiserate with me and say he had a similar experience as a young child as well that embarrassed him as well. So he tried to comfort me, and he was a very sweet soul, and I appreciate that.
By the way, before you continue to give us the items to be covered, I will mention about Dana, and of course, we all extol his brightness, which is an understatement, but let it be known that Dana is one of the few people that we will meet who literally argued successfully before the United States Supreme Court. Not a lot of attorneys can make that claim, not only having never presented a case to the United States Supreme Court, but ending up winning it. So that, that of course is a, speaks to his credentials. With that, if you will, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. We'll be convening in a closed session for the item before you listed as 9A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, case name unspecified since disclosure may jeopardize existing settlement negotiations.
Thank you. We will now recess to closed session. We are back in session. I will ask the city attorney to review anything that was closed during closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable action taken today.
That concludes the meeting today. Meeting is now adjourned.